All right, wow, everyone's attentive. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the regular meeting to order and announce that the board did meet in closed session and the following action was taken. On item number two, there was a settlement. The board took, I'm sorry, on item number one, the board took action and advised council to settle the matter. On three, we have a lot of appointments for principal and vice principal. Ms. Deidre Wood, principal for Pleasant Grove Elementary. Vice principals, Jody Boyle for Arnold Adriani and Sierra Enterprise. Martha Garcia for Samuel Kennedy Elementary. Kyle Harrison, vice principal for Elk Grove and Floran Elementary. Petra Larson, I know I said it wrong already, Myola Beitzel. And principal for Elizabeth Pinkerton Middle School, Ms. Chandra Victor. And vice principal for Laguna Creek High School, we have Richard Gutierrez. I would also like to announce that tonight's meeting is being video recorded and will be available on the district's YouTube channel. I would like to announce that cards are available at the table just outside of the boardroom for anyone who wishes to address the board. If you do wish to address the board, please complete a card and hand it to the staff member to the right side here. Please be sure to complete the card and indicate whether the item you wish to address is on the agenda or not on the agenda. If the matter is on the agenda, we will assume you wish to speak when it comes time to address that item and will hold your card until that time. And now I would like to turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Crystal Martinez-Lary, who will talk a little bit about our parent volunteer at Alitha Donner Elementary.
If I could please call up Eva Johnson and the principal of the elementary school, Michelle Jenkins, please to the podium.
We are very proud to have Eva Johnson represent Alitha Donner Elementary School and leading the pledge of allegiance to begin the Elk Grove Unified School District's board meeting for this Tuesday, June 9th, 2015. Eva is currently our school's PTA president. Eva has been an amazing Donner parent for the past four years. Her son, Jalen, is now finishing third grade and is especially lucky for us. Tricen just finished preschool and will be entering kindergarten this July. As you will discover from reading about Eva, having her as a Donner parent for the next seven years is a tremendous blessing for our students and our school. As our school's PTA president, Eva has volunteered countlessly as our community liaison, bringing in thousands of dollars for our school through donations and fundraisings in addition to setting up monthly Donner Dinner nights at local restaurants. She runs our school's movie matinees and movie nights, sells refreshments, at-home sports games, and helps to coordinate our school events like Walk to School Day, Red Ribbon Week, and teacher appreciation, just to name a few. When our school began year one of PBIS training, Eva happily agreed to be the parent representative on our team. She attended all the trainings and subsequently planning meetings, playing an integral part in bringing the Donner weave, be wise, accountable, vigilant, and empathetic to our students. Now she recruits volunteers and runs the monthly surf shop where students buy prizes with the beach books they earn watching the wave. On top of all that, Eva assists in her children's classes, chaperones, field trips, and works with school staff on anything needing to be done. She is also the team mom for both boys in team sports. Oh, by the way, she does have a full-time job. In her spare time, you can find her training and running half marathons. Personally, Eva is the kindest person with a huge heart for kids. She has an infectious sense of humor and incredible stimuli. Her dedication for our school is evident and the entire Alitha Donner Elementary School community is honored beneficiaries of beyond her generous contributions.
All right, if we can get everyone to stand and please do remove your hat.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a little something for you. Ms. Martinez-Lary will be down there. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you very much for inviting me as well.
The mic's yours. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, how about another round of applause for Ms. Johnson? Thank you for all that you do for our schools. All right, next, I would like to call on Rod Edmiston for the recognition of CIF San Joaquin Section Champions. And assisting will be Mr. Madison.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the school board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Hine. Tonight, I am honored to introduce to you several teams and individual champions from our 2015 spring sports season. These extraordinary athletes have captured SAC Joaquin Section and Masters Championships in Division One and Division Two. By capturing their championships, they have proven to be the very best in the SAC Joaquin Section in the sport they compete in. My father used to tell me, good things happen to those who work hard, and good things have truly happened to this group of athletes and their coaches. To achieve this level of success, it takes total teamwork or pure individual mental toughness on their part. Each of these athletes have one thing in common: dedication, determination, and perseverance. With that, it is my honor to introduce to you the Division One and Two SAC Joaquin Section and Master Champions from the Elk Grove Unified School District. First, the Consumnas Oaks High School Girls Track and Field Team for winning the CIF SAC Joaquin Section Division Two Championship. This is their fifth section title in a row. They have won four Division Four Championships, and this is their first Division Two Championship. Team members are Natsumi McGee, Miche Venerable, Evan Banalis, Amani Parker, Maya Moore, Kendall Harrod, J.C. Wadymouth, Joy Johnson, Nicole Terry, and Coach Mark Taylor.
Parents, you're more than welcome to take photos. You can come up, get a close shot.
Also representing Consumnas Oaks High School is the Athletic Director, William Next is our Franklin High School Girls Soccer Team. They won the CIF SAC Joaquin Section Division One Championship. This is their second championship in three years, and they are the only girls in district history to win a soccer title. Team members, Kayla Arcey, Lauren Azovito, Gabriella Bernard, Brianna Chu, Ricky Deserlay, Aliyah Kelly, Carly Lammera, Taylor Lemon, Anna Lisa Lopez, Sienna Lopez, Erica Mendoza, Jennifer Padilla, Haley Rose, Katie Strong, Hannah Stermer, Kira Taylor, Taylor Thomas, Alexis Valdez, Lauren Williams, Anika Bergstrand, Summer England, Taylor Marty. Head Coach Alicia Lopez could not be here tonight. Assistant Coach Carlos Chavez will be accepting.
Parents, feel free to come up and take photos as well. And also representing Franklin High School this evening is Vice Principal Carlos Castillo. All right.
Next is the Elk Grove High School Boys Baseball Team for winning the CIF SAC Joaquin Section Division One Championship. This is Coach Carlson's sixth section championship. Dylan Carlson, Josh Erps, Tanner Carlson, Ty Madrigal, Eric Bolton, Christian Scott, Ben Ortega, Walker Brown, and representing the Elk Grove Administration, Teacher in Charge, Rudy Ortega. Coach Carlson. Individual championships in Division One, the Boys 100-Meter Dash, Elk Grove High School, Aidan Tank, Coach Tom Rossell. Girls 200-Meter Dash, Pleasant Grove High School, Raven Lawler, Coach Frank Archuleta. Boys High Jump, Franklin High School, Philip Fane. I don't think Philip made it tonight, but accepting him would be Coach Millard Hampton. Division Two, Girls 100-Meter Dash, Consumnas Oaks High School, Natsumi McGee, Coach Mark Girls 200-Meter Dash, Consumnas Oaks High School, Natsumi McGee, Coach Mark Taylor. Representing Pleasant Grove High School is Athletic Director Bruce Beldon, and from Consumnas Oaks High School, William Cap. Girls 4x400-Meter Relay, Consumnas Oaks High School, Amani Parker, Mia Moore, Kendall Harrod, Natsumi McGee, and Coach Mark Taylor. Girls 200-Meter Dash, Consumnas Oaks High School, Natsumi McGee, Coach Frank Archuleta. Boys High Jump, Franklin High School, Philip Fane. I don't think Philip made it tonight, but accepting him would be Coach Millard Hampton. Division Two, Girls 100-Meter Dash, Consumnas Oaks High School, Natsumi McGee, Coach Mark Girls 200-Meter Dash, Consumnas Oaks High School, Natsumi McGee, Coach Mark Taylor. Representing Pleasant Grove High School is Athletic Director Bruce Beldon, and from Consumnas Oaks High School, William Cap. Girls 4x400-Meter Relay, Consumnas Oaks High School, Amani Parker, Mia Moore, Kendall Harrod, Natsumi McGee, and Coach Mark Taylor. And then the Girls 4x100-Meter Relay, also Consumnas Oaks High School, Natsumi McGee, Evan Banalis, Miche Venerable, and Nicole Terry, Coach Mark Taylor. And then the Girls 4x100-Meter Relay, also Consumnas Oaks High School, Natsumi McGee, Evan Banalis, Miche Venerable, and Nicole Terry, Coach Mark Taylor. And now we have a few Masters Champions. The Girls 4x100-Meter Relay, Pleasant Grove High School, Victoria Davis, Maya Daniels, Ellie Avery, and Raven Lawler, Jade Black, and Lauren Hartwell, Coach Frank Archuleta, Toni Gates. Girls 100-Meter Dash, Pleasant Grove High School, Victoria Davis, Maya Daniels, Ellie Avery, and Raven Lawler, Jade Black, and Lauren Hartwell, Coach Frank Archuleta, Toni Gates. Girls 100-Meter Dash, Pleasant Grove High School, Master Champion, Raven Lawler, Coach Frank Archuleta.
She's quick.
Girls 200-Meter Dash, Masters Champion, Consumnas Oaks High School, Natsumi McGee, and Coach Mark Taylor. And the Girls 4x400-Meter Relay, Masters Champions, Franklin High School, Tatiana Jimenez, Cicely Montanez, Kara Smith, Amari Smith, Morgan Beatty, and Coach Millard Hampton. And Coach Natalie Tillis. Congratulations, and we thank you, all of us at the Elk Grove Unified School District are very proud of you, athletes and the coaches.
Nicely done, everyone. All right, next up, we have requests for student expulsions. I'd like to ask if anyone wishes to address the board in closed session regarding a student expulsion recommendation. Seeing none, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the request for student expulsions.
I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any no's or abstentions? Very good. And let's see, next up, we have LCAP, and I'd like to announce that LCAP will be addressed under the Public Hearing Action Items. Same goes with Budget Update. Announce that the Budget Update will be addressed under the Public Hearing and Action Items. We are on to public comment, and I do have one blue card. So I'd like to call on Ms. Susan Mason. Good evening, Ms. Mason. And we, and as you know, you have three minutes. Thank you.
I'd like to just read an article that I came across. It's from Truth in American Education dated May 15th. It's titled California State School Chief Term Common Core House Outlived Its Usefulness. The Common Core is too toxic. How does one address this problem? Well, if you're the California State Superintendent of Public Instruction, you just stop using the term "common core." Last week, California State School Chief Tom Torlicson sent a memo to county and district superintendents, as well as charter school administrators, quote, "I want to let you know that I have changed the way I refer to our new academic standards in speeches and written materials. I am no longer using the term 'common core.' Instead, I am calling them the New California Standards," end quote. As you know, I'm a strong supporter of the new standards in English Language Arts and Mathematics, and believe that they are going a long way toward updating our educational system to meet the challenges of the 21st century, but I believe the term "common core" has outlived its usefulness. Why? Because it confuses some people and has polarized people in other parts of the country. Not here, I guess. But more importantly, it doesn't tell the whole story. It only includes English Language Arts and Math. By contrast, the term "California Standards" covers not only English Language Arts and Mathematics, but all subject areas, including science or the next-generation science standards: English Language Development, History, Social Science, Health, Physical Education, Visual and Performing Arts, and Career Technical Education. In addition, it conveys the context for these standards, making it clear that they have been developed and reviewed by California educators. Further, I frequently refer to the New California Standards as rigorous, to indicate that we are upgrading virtually all of the key subjects California students need to succeed in the 21st century careers in college. The term and brand "common core" will be with us for some time, but I want to share my thinking about how I describe some of the exciting changes we are implementing together to transform education in California. Working together as a team, we are creating the New California Way and building on the huge assets present in our students, teachers, and districts statewide. Sincerely, Tom Torlicson." So I read this, and if it is from him, it says, "Well, oh, all the better then. See, we didn't need to change the standards after all." It just goes to me to a little bit of deception, just change the name and things will be different. And I think, again, when you're presenting this to the community and to parents, that to me is deceptive. He's just changing the name and it's not changing the standards at all or the reason for them. So I would just like to just have this read, and I'm sure, Mr. Hoffman, you received it and have passed it along, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Next up, bargaining units. I'd like to ask if any bargaining unit, yes, I see Ms. Ellis coming up. And Kathleen.
Maggie Ellis, President of Elk Grove Education Association. Tonight's kind of a pleasure-pain type situation. This is my last board meeting officially as President of Elk Grove Education Association. But that doesn't mean I'm going away. You know that my commitment to this district as a teacher, as an educator, leader, as the association, represents... So I read this, and if it is from him, it says, "Well, oh, all the better then. See, we didn't need to change the standards after all." It just goes to me to a little bit of deception, just change the name and things will be different. And I think, again, when you're presenting this to the community and to parents, that to me is deceptive. He's just changing the name, and it's not changing the standards at all, or the reason for them. So I would just like to just have this read, and I'm sure, Mr. Hoffman, you received it and have passed it along, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Next up, bargaining units, I'd like to ask if any bargaining unit, yes, I see Ms. Ellis coming up.
Maggie Ellis, President of Elk Grove Education Association. Tonight's kind of a pleasure/pain-type situation. This is my last board meeting officially, as President of Elk Grove Education Association. But that doesn't mean I'm going away. You know that my commitment to this district as a teacher, as an educator, leader, as the association representative, I'm not going anywhere. You'll still see me. But I do want to introduce you formally to Kathleen Tihon, who is our president-elect, and Rick Stansell, who is our vice president-elect. So you will see them in my stead, but I'm sure I'll be coming in every once in a while, just to maintain that connection with you all. The past four years has been a great learning experience. I would like to say I grew a whole lot through the pain, as well as through building new relationships and new vision and new commitment. And I want to thank this board for the work that you were doing to bring us to a new road. I don't need to rebuild the old road, that's gone. We have a new road in front of us. And for bringing us a great superintendent, who I've had extreme pleasures of working collaboratively with, and with our other union partners in a different vision of labor-management collaboration. And to me, that's one of the most exciting things that we have going for us as we move forward. We have a lot of challenges, whether it's budget, or curriculum, or training, or technology, there's always going to be challenges, but it's the relationship that keeps things moving forward in this district. And I know that you have a commitment to that, and I know our school superintendent has a commitment to that, and we definitely have that commitment too. And they will also, so.
Meetings are already being scheduled.
Yeah. And so, I'm passing off the baton. I will be here until July first. I've been told I'm on duty until then, and then I get to pass it off officially. But tonight will be my official board meeting ending. On another note, more of the business side. A number of years ago, we went through downsizing, particularly at the secondary level. Actually, it wasn't even downsizing, it was pink slipping. And I had a conversation with the makeup of the board at that time about looking at how we do business. What is our formula? How do we determine we need to pink slip, downsize, and making sure that we're not just doing it because we're meeting a timeline, that we're really looking at what does it mean for our schools and for our teachers and for our students? When teachers have to leave a subject area, a grade level, a school site, it's very difficult. When you are a primary teacher and you're reassigned to a secondary, intermediate level, it's very difficult. Same thing when you're at intermediate and you move to primary, or you've left a school site that you've really committed yourself and your whole being to. We know that we are employees of the district, but we do have a lot of commitment to a school. And when all possible, we like that stability. We think it's good for us, it's good for kids, it's good for families. Carmen and Chet, Bobby, you might have been here too. And I said, "We'll probably take all those teachers back in September." And I think we did. We hired everybody back and more. So a similar kind of dynamic is happening right now in terms of some enrollment with TK and Kinder, and there's some shifting going on with preschool programs. And it just seems like over the last few years, there's been a lot of changes that happen after downsized, after transfer, after the school year ends. Traditional is out, modified traditional is out, year-round is ending in two days, and people have been notified during this final window during their summer that their placements are being changed. That at TK classrooms, we don't have the numbers, or at Kinder, we don't have the numbers. So my concern is that what's the formula? Where's the timeline? What's the process? And yet, it may be that we need to do it. Are we being too conservative? Are we closing classrooms that have half-full? And yet, maybe when traditional comes around, we'll need to open that classroom back up? I just have concerns. One of it being that the teachers who are being notified now, that they're going to be reassigned, we do have positions, but they didn't get to go through the voluntary transfer period. They made commitments to a position, and some of them have already gone out and bought supplies for their new position, or their returning position, or they've created vacations. We're not talking about when you affect one person, you probably affect about three more. So as we go through this, we're going to do what we need to do. Communication is vital. We get a little miffed when we hear from our members that they've noticed that they're going to be moved, or a position's going to be closed, and the district hasn't notified us directly. To me, if a principal's been notified that they're closing a K or a TK or whatever classroom, we should be notified at the same time so that we're prepared for whatever's coming our direction from the members. It's all about communication. So as we move through the next year, I'm putting this on their plate to make sure that when downsized comes around, if the numbers aren't there for certain classrooms, then let those people know ahead of time, saying, "Chances are, your position's not going to be available, you might want to consider downsizing it." And then if the numbers do arrive, then you can open it back up. But to do it after the year's over, you're going to have to pay per diem for people to come back, box up their classes, move classrooms, move school sites potentially, it just causes disruption that I don't think is good for teachers, or students, or families. So I ask you to put that on your plate, schedule it in there of something to look at, and we can get better at what we do. And that's the end of my business, you won't hear from me again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you, Ms. Ellis, for your dedication and service. I have no doubt that we will continue to be partners in education, is our coin phrase from our trip. Thank you. Any other bargaining units? All right, very good. We have no reports, so we are now on to our Public Hearing Action Items. I'd like to call in Mr. Glenn DeGraw for our tentative agreement between Elk Grove Unified School District and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees 2014-15, and 2015-16.
So, we have three tentative agreements that we bring forward tonight. Previously, the board has approved our tentative agreements with our teachers, with our transportation workers, and with our psychologists and social workers. Tonight, we have the remaining employee groups. AFSPME, as was just announced, is item number ten. Number eleven is the California School Employees Association, CSCE, and number thirteen is our Meet and Confer Employees. All of these agreements are more alike than different, and what's required in the education code is that the board have a public hearing. Anytime you're going to take revenue from the district and share that with employees through negotiated agreements, it requires that the public has the right to comment on that. So that's part of the process tonight, is to hold a public hearing on each of these agreements, and then to take action. And staff recommends that the board does take action to approve these agreements, and I commend, I wasn't here to negotiate these agreements, other staff did that, but both on the district side of the bargaining team, and for each of the collective bargaining teams from our associations, I commend them on their good work and what they've accomplished. And again, staff recommends that the board approve these items after you've held public hearings. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Mr. DeGraw, would you like these to be done separately or collectively?
To be separately.
Very good.
Because they're three separate items.
All right, very good. So on number ten, we are going to call for a public hearing on the tentative agreement between the district and AFSPME. All right, I will close the public hearing and call for a motion to approve the agreement. We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any noes or abstentions? Very good. Item eleven, tentative agreement between Elk Grove Unified School District and the California School Employees Association 2014-15, and 2015-16. Mr. DeGraw.
As you can see, this is a two-year agreement, each of these agreements are. Again, they're more alike, and it's wonderful that we're in an era where there's revenue coming from the state, and that revenue is coming in significant dollars to education, and it's wonderful that the district has the vision to share that revenue with employees as appropriate. And staff, again, recommends approval after you've had a public hearing.
All right, very good. I'd like to call for a public hearing on the tentative agreement between the district and CSCE. All right, I will close the public hearing and call for a motion to approve the agreement.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any noes or abstentions? Very good. Next item, Meet and Confer Summary between Elk Grove Unified School District and Mental Health Therapist/Behavior Support Specialist EG Teams/Met and Confer Employee Groups 2014-15 and 2015-16. Mr. DeGraw.
Staff recommends approval after a board hearing.
Very good. And I will call for a public hearing on the tentative agreement between the district and EG Teams/Mental Health Therapist/Behavior Support Specialists. I will close the public hearing and call for a motion to approve these agreements.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Aye.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any noes or abstentions? Very good. Thank you, Mr. DeGraw. All right, action items. I'd like to announce that item number thirty-six was moved from the consent agenda to the action and discussion items. So I would like to call on Mr. Rod Edmiston on the elimination of voluntary athletic
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the school board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Heine. Tonight, I ask the board to approve the elimination of the voluntary athletic contribution, known as VAC, beginning for the 2015-16 school year. Since 2010-11 school year, the Elk Grove Unified School District has sponsored a voluntary athletic contribution program in which parents voluntarily contributed money to support school-level and district athletics. The program was initially implemented because of the financial crisis in the state of California, which resulted in the reduction of funding and significant budget cuts for the Elk Grove School District. The VAC helped to fund transportation, cost of officials, and security for 2010 through 15. Now, as a result of increased funding for public education, the district is in the position to more fully fund high school athletics. In the proposed 2015-16 budget, $2.4 million is allocated to support a comprehensive high school sports program. As a result, the need for a voluntary athletic contribution to augment athletic funding is not as critical. With appreciation to our parents and the community for their generous voluntary contributions over the years, the board is asked to take action to eliminate the voluntary athletic contribution beginning in 2015-16 school year. I would be happy to answer any questions the board may have at this time.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments for Mr. Edmiston? All right, I would just like to thank, on behalf of the entire board, our parent community. Without their support, we really could not have sustained our athletic program, so whoever's watching on the YouTube channel, and those that are here this evening, we really want to thank all of you for your generosity, to seeing us through those difficult years. And we're finally at a place that we can restore it at a level that we no longer need that ongoing support, so thank you. Mr. Madison?
Yeah, I just wanted to carry on with that. We did go through some, I was here to witness, some really hard times, and athletics is such an important component of our high schools or middle schools, and the parents came through and helped with the revenue base of the athletic program. So it is something I think is very dire need in this district. It's reputable. We saw tonight all the champions from CFI, the track teams, and our baseball team in Elk Grove. So it's something I want to go on public record too, that thank all the parents that got us through those four hard years that we didn't have the funds. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the elimination of voluntary athletic contributions beginning in the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
We have a motion? And a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any noes or abstentions? All right.
Thank you.
So do that now? Okay, we are going to go a little bit around on the agenda and move on to seventeen A, because we do have some fine folks here from our respective schools. So I'd like to call on Ms. Donna Cherry for the recommendation of names for the library at Sunrise Elementary and the computer lab at David Reese Elementary.
Good evening. Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Heine. This evening, I come to you asking that you please approve two requests. And again, the first request is for Sunrise Elementary School, and the second one is for David Reese Elementary School. I'm going to ask Tamela Moore from Sunrise to come join me at the podium, please.
Hi, good evening.
Pursuant to Administrative Regulation 7511, the Board of Education has requested to approve both of these this evening. And just to read to you from the AR, "When rooms or buildings, such as libraries, multipurpose rooms, gymnasiums, or athletic fields are named, the following procedure will apply. Number one, the school staff and community, under the direction of the principal, shall select an appropriate name from information gathered within the school community. Two, the principal shall take that recommendation of an appropriate name for a room, building, or field to the superintendent, who will forward it for review to the School Names Committee when active, or to the Community Advisor for Schools Facility Naming. And number three, the School Names Committee, or the Community Advisory for School Facilities Naming, will review the recommendation and advise a superintendent, who will then present the recommendation of the school staff and community to the Board of Education for a final decision." And so this evening, we ask for your decision, first on Sunrise Elementary School. Ms. Judy Hunt Brown, retiring principal of Sunrise Elementary School, has been a team member for well over thirty years in the Elk Grove Unified School District. She opened Sunrise Elementary in 2007, and she will be retiring this year after years and years and years of exemplary service to our district, to our students, our staff, and our community. She worked hand-in-hand with all stakeholders to create a school where students excel in both academics as well as social responsibilities. To accompany her legacy and acknowledge her untiring devotion, the school staff and community request that the school library be named the Judy Hunt Brown Library. A plaque outside the library will be installed in honor of her legacy that she leaves at Sunrise Elementary School, and we ask this evening that you approve the Judy Hunt Brown School Library.
I'll certainly move that.
We have a motion and a few seconds, so one of those is, I think Mr. Porcina has the second. And before we take the vote, I just want to say that I think this is just tremendous that we do something like this in our district, and really recognize... Oh, thank you for putting my mic on. I usually have a loud voice anyways. That we do have a practice of honoring a great service in our district, so I, of course, am a yes vote, and I just wanted to congratulate you, thank you, and say that you will obviously be missed. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes, abstentions? Very good. Would you want to say anything?
Yes, I wanted to appreciate Sunrise's gratitude for you allowing this to happen, for us to honor our fabulous principal. We love her dearly, and we will miss her very much.
Yes, very good. Thank you.
Second this evening, I would like Principal Jennifer Avi, and she has members of our staff, if you'll come join us at the podium, please. While they are coming forward, I remember just like it was yesterday, on July fourteenth of 2014, when teacher of David Reese Elementary School was riding his bike to school, which he did pretty much every day, rain or shine, and he died unexpectedly on his way to school that morning. And I remember the staff assembling in the staff lounge, and the outpouring of kindness and love and affection that was in that room, and everybody circled one another and held hands, and it was just such a very magical time. So this evening, I'm joined by several staff members. Mr. Fier, a twenty-five-year-old veteran teacher, died unexpectedly while riding his bike to work on July fourteenth, 2014. He was a leader in the area of technology. Staff and students alike looked up to him. The school staff wanted a permanent way to honor him, and what better way to honor his service and his impact on the entire school community of David Reese, other than naming the computer lab after Mr. Fier? It would be a way to show their respect and acknowledge the impact for generations to follow. A plaque outside the computer lab will be installed in Mr. Bill Fier's honor. And so I'd like to ask this evening to approve the naming of the computer lab, the Mr. Bill Fier Computer Lab, excuse me.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to move approval.
I'll second that.
Naming the computer lab.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much for doing that. All of the staff that's with me today, actually, most of them have taught with Bill. So I've been at Reese for six years and he was there for 25 years and many of them have been with him for that entire time. He was one of those early adopters in technology way back when, when people probably thought he was crazy for doing it. And really naming the lab after him is a true testament to what he contributed to the school and just the support he gave all of us. So it really, really means a lot to us, thank you so much.
You know, when I read this board communication, most board communications don't bring a tear to my eye and this, of course, did. And again, it goes back to, I'm so proud that our district recognizes tremendous leadership and it's wonderful legacy that his name will continue and inspire future students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I need to thank our superintendent, of course, as well as Elizabeth Pinkerton for her assistance in this matter, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cherry beat me to it, but I wanted to make sure to recognize Ms. Pinkerton for her assistance. I mean, clearly, these two individuals were so worthy of recognition and she's done a fantastic job. Ms. Pinkerton, back there, we're talking about you. Thank you so much for your help in identifying these two individuals.
Absolutely. Our resident historian. Thank you, Ms. Pinkerton. All right, next up, I'd like to call on Ms. Sanja Lowry for the adoption of Elk Grove Unified School District's Local Control Accountability Plan.
Good evening, I'm not sure who lowered the podium, I think it was Donna. My best with this one.
That means she's taller than you.
President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, Ms. Heine. Two weeks ago, on June 9th, you all held a successful public hearing of our district's Local Control Accountability Plan and district budget. And this was attributed to all of your leadership and Superintendent Hoffman's leadership, guiding our process to analyze our needs here in Elk Grove, engaging our stakeholders and essentially creating goals and actions to meet our needs and support our students and families. And so tonight, staff is recommending, and we're asking the board to approve the Elk Grove Unified School District's Local Control Accountability Plan.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lowry. Does anyone have any pending questions that we have not already addressed on the numerous previous occasions? Yes, Mr. Perez?
Yes, I do, but it also concerns consent agenda, action, item number 24, approval of budget transfers. So do you want me to address that issue now regarding the budget transfers?
No.
Or, but it is, it's related to LCAP and also, yes, I just do.
And this is, I, I think you're, I mean, I, there's really no nexus to that. We've had several opportunities to raise questions regarding LCAP and any content. So if you want to, if you have any questions on that, I would suggest you bring it up at the end on that item.
Pull item number 24, yes, I will.
Okay, so when we get to that item, we can pull it. Hearing, no pending questions, I would like to call for a motion to adopt. Oh, did you have one? Go ahead.
Quick comment.
Yes, this is.
Before we take the vote. Tonight is, is a great night because it's the culmination of our LCAP in which we've not only met the letter of the law, we have met the spirit of the law. And it is pleasing that the document represents the collaboration of all of our stakeholders. We've talked from the beginning about the importance of inclusion and indeed, we have a document that has been developed with all who wanted to participate. And what's great, I believe, and as the board was reminded by Ms. Pinkerton a short while ago, we're going to be approving the LCAP on the eve of our district's 56th birthday, which is July 1st. And it's great that the two coincide. We have been a leader, we continue to be a leader, we will always be a leader. And this document, which was developed with great input and great work, shows what we're about and, and it is great to be a part of this kind of an effort, so thank you.
Thank you, we wanted to weave in the recognition of our anniversary and figured that was the best place to do it. All right, so with that, I'd like to call for a motion to adopt the Elk Grove Unified School District's LCAP.
I move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, and again, echoing what Mr. Fortina said, very proud of all of the great work our district has done on behalf of our students. Very transparent, a very open, engaging, vibrant process. So thank you all, from bargaining units to our leadership team and the community, the parents, everybody, and of course, even our media partners for reminding the community when we had such workshops. So thank you as well, very important stakeholder. All right, next up, we have Ms. Penna for the adoption of Elk Grove Charter Schools Local Control Accountability Plan.
Thank you, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Heine. Absent Ms. Kathy Hamilton, who is actually representing us in Dearborn, Michigan this evening with Ford Pass, and Mark Levine, principal of Charter, who was unable to be here. I stand before you tonight and I ask you to adopt Elk Grove Charter Schools Local Control Accountability Plan. On a much smaller scale than what Sanja described, the Charter School underwent the same process of gathering input from stakeholders and developing a plan that is aligned with our Elk Grove strategic goals but that serve the specific needs of students at the Elk Grove Charter School. Also, as with the district's plan, we did conduct a public hearing, according to law, at the last meeting and therefore tonight, I ask you to approve this LCAP for Elk Grove Charter School.
Very good, thank you so much, Ms. Penna. I'd like to call for a motion to the, to adopt Elk Grove Charter Schools LCAP.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Elk Grove Charter Schools LCAP.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's or abstentions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and next up, we have Mr. Fagan for the 2015-16 adopted budget.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Heine. The previous two board agenda items talked about the accountability plan. And so I'm here to ask for the board to approve the funding plan that will allow us to implement both of those accountability plans. As you know, the state requires that we adopt a budget for next year, for 2015, by no later than July 1st. The budget that we are submitting is consistent with the presentation that I made for all funds on the 9th with the changes and the subsequent corrected version of the presentation that I sent out to the board after that. So it's consistent with the changes that I discussed on the 9th for Fund 13 and Fund 52. We continue to monitor actions at the state level, we'll be back in July, at the July meeting with a 45-day revise. So with that, I would entertain any questions and ask the board to approve the 2015-16 adopted budget.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Fagan, any pending questions from my colleagues?
Could you elaborate what we could do within the 45-day revisions?
We would just make changes based on the final budget since we actually have to put this to bed and do all the state software prior to the state legislature and the governor reconciling their budget. So it would be the small changes that were made. Generally, there was a small reduction to the gap closure in the LCFF piece and then a small reduction to our one-time funding for next year. So we'd, we'd bring the details of that to the board on the, on the 21st.
The 21st of what?
July.
July.
Do we, are we going to receive more money?
No, no, actually, it dropped, we're receiving more money, but the amount we had estimated in the adopted budget will drop slightly.
Oh, so this budget we're talking about includes that money that?
It includes the, the May revision.
Right.
Numbers, but not the final negotiated items between the legislature and the governor that was done last week.
Friday.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fagan, and I again want to thank you and all of your staff before we take our motion on just all of the robust discussions that we've had this past year. It's just been a wonderful, again, transparent process. And again, I feel very proud that this really is one of those budgets that really is truly meeting the needs of our children and we've included all of our various stakeholders in the process. And so I'm very proud again, and I wanted to thank you and commend you for all of your hard work.
I got one more last question. What was the total of the base grant that I requested to find out last time I was here? I requested, how much was, were we given for the base amount, the total, and also the supplemental and the concentrated?
I thought we sent that out, but let me double check.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to call for a motion to adopt the 2015-16 adopted budget.
So moved?
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Any discussion, go for it, Mr. Fortina.
Thank you. I'd like to make a couple of comments and those comments may not have any importance other than to myself, but I think it's important to make them. Over the previous two years, I have voted no to the budgets that were brought forth to the board. I had a number of reasons for voting no, but primarily because I had been asked to vote on a budget for which I had no information and I was never willing to do that. I believe we have a fiduciary responsibility that must be honored. And to, to ask for a yes vote when I had neither the information on income or expenses for our funds, I did not think was appropriate and therefore could not vote for approval on the budget. This has been a very different year. And when we vote tonight, it's going to be pleasing to me that I can vote affirmatively for the budget and I do thank you for, for all the work.
Sure.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Any no's or abstentions?
No, and I want to explain my reasoning in item 14 because of the fact that I had some prior discussions regarding these budget items in which regarding the supplemental and concentration funds should be spent, so I will bring that up in 14. 24.
Okay, so we have six, six yes and one no with Mr. Perez as the no vote. The motion was from Ms. Titus Espinosa and the second was Ms. Albani. Thank you. All right, Mr. Hoffman, on non-represented employee contracts.
Okay, it's my pleasure to, to bring forward the recommendation to approve the contracts for the associate superintendents that make up part of my cabinet. We did do some work in revising these particular agreements so that they do meet the new retirement laws and is actually a reconstruction of the associate agreements. The changes that we made weren't a change to total compensation with regards to meeting the new retirement laws, but those changes I do think are, are appropriate. The new associate agreements also do not, I want to make sure clear, do not provide the lottery stipend that the other groups received through all the, because that's not part of those contracts. I want to make sure that we're clear about that. They do include language which is very similar to what occurred with all the other employees, which is a one and a half percent retroactive raise for 2014-15. And for 2015-16, a 2.5% increase with the 1% contingency language, which is also included in the other contracts. Each of these contracts will go through June 30th of 2018 and I ask that the board approve the revised associate superintendent contracts.
Thank you, Superintendent Hoffman, any questions or comments from the board? All right, hearing none, I would like to call for a motion to approve the non-represented employee contracts.
I move approval, non-represented employee contracts.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any no's or abstentions? All right, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have superintendent's contract. And I have a little skit here that I have to read per counsel. But first, I'd just like to remind my colleagues here that you do have a copy of the superintendent's contract. And so you've had an opportunity to review the recommendations. So the notes are, again, consistent with new retirement laws. The permanent restructure of the superintendent's agreement does not result in any increase to the superintendent's total compensation package. The new superintendent's agreement does not provide the 2014-15 retroactive increase and lottery conversion amount provided to other district employees. Consistent with the compensation increases provided to other district employees, the new superintendent's agreement provides a 1.5% increase for the 2014-2015 school year beginning on July 1st, 2015, and a 2.5% increase and 1% contingency increase for the 2015-2016 school year, also beginning on July 1st, 2015. The superintendent's agreement has been revised to comply with these new changes in the law and has been extended to June 30th, 2019. Any additional comments or questions from my colleagues? All right, hearing none, I would like to call for a motion to approve the superintendent's contract.
With pleasure that I move the approval of the superintendent's contract.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any no's or abstentions? All right, very good.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have board member and superintendent report. Any reports from colleagues? Ms. Titus Espinosa.
Well, Madam Chair, because you suggested it, I will share about the training I was lucky enough to attend today. Training conducted by the Coalition of Adequate School Housing, the acronym is CASH. And Mr. Pierce, who couldn't be here today, is very familiar with this group. It was very valuable to learn a lot about options for financing school facilities in a district such as ours, which has so many facilities needs. So it was very interesting and I hope that knowledge will be useful in the future.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Titus Espinosa. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just want to mention, I want to thank all my colleagues and the staff for supporting and attending the Spotlight at the Ranch. It was a wonderful occasion to ra, raise scholarships for our students in the district and also with Ms. Pinkerton in the back there, she's an avid supporter as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, do you have any report for us?
So very quickly, I do want to say I had the opportunity to serve as a judge at the rib eating, or the rib, it was a rib eating contest for me, but it was a rib making contest for, for those that were actually in the contest at the Spotlight at the Ranch. And there were some phenomenal entries and had a great time. And as Mr. Madison said, a great opportunity to raise funds for, for our kids. I just wanted to very quickly say it's very hard to believe it's been seven months that I've been officially in this role as superintendent. Very glad we came to the agreement that this was the, the right place for me. And I just want to say thank you to my cabinet specifically for all the support and work and, and all of their staff working, what we've done so far. The work with the associations, it truly is a teamwork and, and I appreciate the openness to thinking about collaboration and looking at doing the work in a new way. And so the, the work has been great, it's amazing how fast it's gone. Looking forward to getting away for a wee bit and looking forward to our work moving forward, so thank you.
Madam President? Yes. I'm sorry, one more thing, I'll make it quick. I've been wanting to make a comment, there's this, this feeling that I, I didn't know when was the right time to express, but I guess I'll, I'll make it now. It may look like this meeting on the surface is, is very simple and we've approved some very significant issues with not a lot of discussion seemingly. I, I just, I want to make sure for the record that folks know what a tremendous amount of work has gotten into so many of the items that we've approved today. And you know, first credit goes to staff who helps us to make it look this easy. But you know, everything like the LCAP and the budget really starts with our school site staff, with our parents, all of the volunteers across the community, all the stakeholders who provided input so that we can make sure that these guiding documents like the budget and the LCAP are a reflection of what our kids and our community need. So you know, we have tentative agreements here and I was thinking of that when Ms. Ellis was giving her final report, her final official report, that it, it really is credit to every single individual who was part of that. to every single individual who was part of that process to get us to where we are, and, you know, today's the culmination of that. So, just wanted to express my gratitude to everyone who made that happen.
Thank you, absolutely. I mean, tonight was what seemed like a very heavy agenda, but our, the great work started last year, so we were able to get here in a more seamless manner because of all of the great work that we've had through our various other workshops and, you know, our, our public hearings and prior agenda items. So, we were able to sort of rally around and be supportive of all of the great work because we've had so much opportunity to work on it. So, it's great to be able to come on such an important night and be able to give that stamp of approval, recognizing all of the tremendous work that our district does. So, thank you for that as well. So, next up, we have consent agenda, and I will turn it over to Mr. Fortina.
Mr. Perez, do you still wish to discuss item 24?
Item 24 and 38 pulled 38.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items number 18 through 52D, except for item 36, which was moved previously to discussion, and items 24 and 38, which have been pulled by Mr. Perez.
All right, so we have a motion to approve with the exclusion of item 24 and 38. We have a motion by Mr. Fortina. Do we have a second?
Have a second.
We have a second with Ms. Martinez-Lary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? All right, Mr. Perez, item 24.
On page... Okay. On page 43 of June 23rd, 2015 budget transfer detail, we are transferring, I think, make sure, on 7110 through 7415, we transferring money out. Page 43.
Now, those, the, the top part?
Transferring, right. It says, "Adjust budget to reflect 3% salary increase."
Correct. Those are, those are adjustments to the actual programs to, to increase their budget based on the approved contract, or the tentative agreements and the agreements with the bargaining units.
So, I mean, so that, so those numbers are the present balance?
That's the change to those programs to, to reflect the increase of the 3%.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna take out from...
Would come from the...
Seventy-two forty supplemental program services, seven to, seventh to 12th grade, $33,000 from that budget item.
We increase their expenditures to account for the salaries that are in there have increased by 3%.
Right, so we took away from high school students, correct?
I, I don't understand the question.
Well, you said we, there's adjustment, adjust budget to reflect 3% salary increase.
Correct.
Okay, so what did we adjust?
We adjust the salaries and the, and the benefits that go with that.
So, what did we take away from that line item? Did we?
Remember, remember, Mr. Perez?
Seventy-two forty.
We got more money this year. We got more money this year, so it's just an addition.
So, is your question that, did we balance the program based on the increase? We applied the increase to the, to the budget to reflect the fact that we're gonna have a higher level of expenditures in those budgets.
So, we got the money?
Yeah.
So, so what I'm, I'm wondering about, what I don't understand, on those, it's my understanding the 7110 through the 7415 are, those are line items for supplemental concentration numbers? Funds?
Well, they're board-approved priorities.
I, I didn't say that, but...
Well, that's what I'm, but I'm saying that's what they are, they're board-approved priorities.
Priorities.
Mr. Perez, did you have an opportunity to ask these questions prior of Mr. Fagan?
You ask me all the time about that. Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
It's important because it's unfair to ask a consent agenda item and the level of detail that you're looking without giving him the benefit of having the information that you are requesting.
Yes, I went to the district office.
The courtesy would be to give him heads up.
I did. And, and I, and I learned that the 7100 general fund numbers were, were concentrated and supplemental items. What I'm wondering, so did you take away money from this line items to, to, to adjust the budget?
I, I would have to check on that, Mr. Perez. If that, if your question is, we pulled the money all came from the reserves or from the new revenues is where it came from. So, I would have to go back and look to see how the adjustment was made, whether it was just an adjustment to it, but you have to understand as a retro, at this time of year?
Right.
That what's been spent's been spent.
Right.
So, the budget gets adjusted, and if the 3% with their other expenditures created over expenditure piece, we take that into consideration as we reviewed that budget for the year.
Right. What I'm concerned about is that...
If, if your question is, do we take money away from the program for the raise, that question would be no, just simply because of the timing of the raise, we, we have to increase the budget to match the, the anticipated expenditures. But if they'd spent all their budget already on the actual program itself, then as we review the budget at the end of the year, we did not let them, we did not not let them spend any of their money on the intended uses of that during the year. So, they got to buy what they needed to buy to run the program.
Okay. First of all, I support the 3% salary increase across the board district, but what I'm concerned about, as a district, we're not using supplemental or concentration funding for salary increases. Now, is, are we using supplemental and concentration funding for salary increases?
I think the general answer to that is, is that as we analyze that, we look at the district overall, and that's an excellent question that, that you're asking us, but we look at the, the total funds that are available and the fact that the supplemental and concentration grants aren't fully implemented at this time. So, as we move forward, we spend base dollars predominantly on this program, but as part of the increase that we provided, some of it would have come from supplemental and concentration grants, yes?
Well, as of today, we don't have a policy regarding that issue, do we?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay. What I'm, so, so, so last year, we, we used supplemental and concentration monies for salary increases, right? And the way we write in our, our LCAP for the next, I mean, school year and the following school year, you may do that again, correct?
We've...
Do you have the okay to do that?
We've met the obligations of spending under the LCAP based on the dollars we've spent and identified in the LCAP of supplemental and concentration grants required by the state.
Well...
We've had numerous hearings, we've had budget workshops.
No, but...
We have vetted these, and you've had an opportunity to raise your questions or concerns. This is a consent agenda item, sir, so we've actually already had discussions on these, and as a board, we have taken action on, and identified very clearly what those priorities are.
Okay. Yes, you're right, we talked about priorities, but we never talked about policy issues, how to spend supplemental or concentrated funding on salary. Okay, what I'm getting at is that I have been working the last three years with the communities, organizations through California, and one big concern is using supplemental and concentrated funding for salary increases across the board. We feel that in order to fix the achievement gap and improve incomes, that we should make sure that this money is spent on these students, right? And these students I'm talking about are low-income students, English language learners, and foster youth in special ed.
Are you saying that our district is not recognizing their needs?
Hold on here. And so, so I've been studying this issue, and I've been speaking to other staff last week at district office, and I had a discussion that I knew of an organization, the Public Advocates of ACLU, American Civil Liberties Union, California Affiliates, they put out a letter to all counties and district superintendents regarding the legal requirements of the LCAP. Legal requirements that LEAs should review as they finalize their annual updates and revise LCAPs for 2015, 2016. And one, one of the issues that I've talked to the staff is the fact that I'm very concerned regarding supplemental and concentration funding. Okay, they say supplemental and concentrated funding generally cannot be used for across-the-board salary increases. As a, as a general matter, across-the-board salary increases do not increase or improve the services for students or otherwise upgrade the entire educational programs in the district as the LCFF statutes and regulations require. So, that's been on my mind, and I spoke to staff here, and that we need to discuss this and have a discussion with the board to, to clear this issue.
Okay, so, sir, my recommendation is to meet with the superintendent to make that recommendation, or suggestion, which we have not done.
So, that, and the education code, we need to deal with. And so, I want to deal with that because I think, and what's going on in our community, we have this individual who writes from, for the Sacramento Bee dividing us as board members and, and unions, that he is saying, the bottom line, he's saying that we are using LCAP for salary increases.
Okay, sir, you know you just voted on the LCAP, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, well, so your position right now is very inconsistent with what you just voted on.
Exactly.
So, if you have any rhetorical questions that you would like to discuss as a matter of policy?
Yes, it's a policy issue.
Okay, well, then, at your next one-on-one meeting with the superintendent, please make a request, like we all do, that you would like to have a specific discussion and what that discussion needs, what you would like to see. But you need to make that request, because as it stands right now, whatever issues you're raising contradict the vote you just took a few minutes ago.
Right. I support the LCAP. I support the way you called the salary increases, but I do not support using supplemental and concentration on salary increases. I prefer to use base, base funding, that's it.
Mr. Perez, just for clarification, the LCAP is the document where we say how we're allocating all of the LCAP funds, base, supplemental, concentration. So, if you were okay with the LCAP, then this issue that you're raising right now is, is one that we have addressed. I'm familiar with the letter, and just to place it in context, with all due respect to the advocates who sent it out, they're, they're not the ones who run schools in California. The superintendent of Public Instruction in California sent out two letters on that topic clarifying that, of course, generally, you know, increases in salaries is not the intent of LCAP, it's bettering outcomes for our kids, as we all understand. But under specified criteria, you can spend those dollars on salary increases. That's when it's in your cap, it's when it's in your LCAP, and you've made the case about how it's gonna improve outcomes for those targeted kids. But again, those are the conversations that we had in the LCAP. So, if you were okay with the LCAP, I think this is an important issue, but it's, it's been addressed.
Thank you. Moving on then to item number 38. Your questions?
I'd like to know where these fundings are coming from.
These were approved as part of the board's approval of our budget. It was, these were part of the budget priorities that were brought forward when we had our meetings and our community meetings, where we talked about these sorts of programs, the Improve Your Tomorrow, there also was the CAP pilot at Laguna Creek High School. It was where we talked about the money for honors and for advanced placement, for gate, and so it is coming out of the source of funding that the board has already approved. The reason it's coming forward in this format right now is because it is over $86,000 and therefore cannot go on the ratification item. And so, I had sent a board communication explaining this, and of course, the contract is attached, so.
Thank you.
You still haven't told me what line item budget, is it supplemental or concentration, base grant funding, what?
Ms. Stenner, can you assist with that? Thank you.
Good evening. The targeted kids in this particular contract, we felt that it would be appropriate to use supplemental concentration funding for this contract.
Okay, I support that 100%. In fact, I like to have programs very similar to this, like this at Florin High School. This is the type of program I support, but in your financial summary, we should have that. There wouldn't be no questions.
We brought it to the board.
These are items we've discussed.
No, no, Mr. Perez, Perez, we brought this with the idea that this is gonna be a pilot, and we're going in future years, the plan is to take it to Florin and other, and other schools. That's, that was the whole purpose of doing this.
You have a pilot, you measure its success, and then you expand.
Yes, we have presently a civil, a civil rights lawsuit at Florin High School that could have actually resolved this issue with Florin High School issues, I think. So, you know, I'm, I'm not sure why you did your priorities at this particular school.
It's not, it was the board.
Those are the board priorities.
It was the board, so it was us. You were part of that discussion, sir.
Yes, and also...
So, before we start expanding and spending dollars, we like to have a pilot to measure its success and be prudent with taxpayer dollars.
Yes, I recall.
Have those measurables and data sets.
That I don't, I don't think we had a, we were discussing $10,000, I think, at one time, not 100, as I recall.
No, sir, it's $65,000 per high school and $35,000 for middle school. What was originally brought forward actually was to have Jackman and Valley, and then bring Florin High School on next year as well, with the thought that the following year we would add Rutter and we would add another high school. But rather than making such a large commitment of funding, we wanted to run this as a pilot. It actually has been run at, at Valley High School for a number of years through grant and other funding. It has not been district-supported. But the goal is that this is successful and the metrics are included in the contract, that with the board's approval, it would be expanded, and the Florin region is the next area in which it would expand.
Like you mentioned, I did hear that it was run prior years, it was very successful. You know, I wouldn't consider a pilot program. It's, it's, it's a successful program that, that was been implemented in the past. Those are the type of programs that we need to do at other schools.
Sir, that, you...
Yeah, and we have plenty of money to do that.
And when we took action, you had ample opportunity to discuss expanding it at that time. So, at this time, I would like to call for a motion to approve item number 24 and 28.
I move approval of both items, 24 and 38.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Okay, any other items from the floor? I would like to say that Mr. Fortina and I did attend the CSBA online agenda training, and we will be the, the two piloting this. Don't worry, I'll have a backup, just in case, at the next July meeting, but I have no, no, no issues that we'll be able to move forward and get everybody up to speed and, and trained, so that we will not have these heavy binders anymore and kill, killing all those trees. So, with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for staying put.
Thank you.